I'd like to call the order for the council meeting of Tuesday, May 2nd of 2017. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Sue Anne Gardner, Derek Perry, Sonia Sanders.
Here. Would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the workshop minutes from April 18th of 2017?
I have a correction, small correction. It's the Alex Otei Trio, not the Alex Lieber Trio, Levin Trio, for the announcements. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Workshop minutes are approved with the new edits. Earlier this evening, we did not have an executive session. Next order of business we have are the presentations from the Narsetown Special and Cultural Events Committee.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Alyssa Miller, co-chair of the Special and Cultural Events Committee. I'm here to just give you an update on the planning of the Fourth of July celebration coming up. So, won't take up too much of your time because I know that's not what all these lovely people behind me here are for tonight. So, in April, a letter was sent out to last year's participants asking them if they would like to be a part of this year's event again. So, we are in the process of getting those applications from the participants. They're slow to come in, but we are following up, actively working also on soliciting new participants. You may have seen a packet they made. Did you all get a packet of them? I don't know. Some of the confirmed participants are the Philadelphia German Van, CADCOM, Representative Matt Bradford's office, SEPTA, and Montgomery County Suicide Prevention Task Force. But I know there's a lot of people and organizations on that list that will be involved this year. As far as the festivities, my co-chair Carl Mo Man has been working actively on that. He can't be here tonight, but I'm going to give a little recap of what he's shared with me so far. He's been working closely with Parks and Rec Department, who has already put some plans together. There is a 5K run in the morning, all sorts of music, amusement rides, arts and crafts. There's going to be a clown and other attractions. We are working also as a committee to line up additional entertainment, a few that are in the works. We'd like to get someone dressed as Uncle Sam and have a selfie station so people could take pictures with Uncle Sam on the Fourth of July and have hashtags so we could retweet it and get the excitement building on social media. I know Carl is working with a number of water ice vendors in Narsetown area to have a war of the water ice. So, people at the celebration could sample the water ice and vote on which one they liked best, and then the winner would be announced right before the fireworks. Also, working with the Narsetown Historical Society to have a booth and showcase the impact that Narsetown had on the founding of our country. Also, working on the food trucks that we had last year. I understand that they were a big pull. As far as communications and support of the event, we've set up an email for the committee, A Facebook page has been created just specifically for the event. That's facebook.com/narsetownjuly4. We'll be using social media to solicit new participants and support such as in-kind and financial donations and potential sponsorship. We've also created a flyer that you may have. This is for members of our committee and certainly members of the public to pick up in public spaces. That is asking for participants in the parade, the rest of the celebration, and also gives details on how they become a sponsor. Also currently reaching out to local print and radio outlets on potential media sponsorship as well as TV stations. So, that's where we're at right now, really big into the planning phase, but we feel like we are in a good position. Two months is around the corner, but it also is a little bit of time for us. So, we still have a month until the applications are due, but we feel really good about where we're going and still getting new ideas and putting them into motion. I also understand that because of the plans that we have in the works and things that we've done in the past, that we should request a waiver for the food trucks to be allowed on that day, also for potential sponsor signage at the event, and to allow for one day a change in the ordinance to allow the beer garden as we've done in the past.
Thank you for the update, and we look forward to the Fourth of July celebration. Councilwoman Brady?
Just a clarification. So, if anyone is interested in participating in the event, they're to use this email address to contact you and let them know?
Correct.
So that then, an application will go out to them?
Correct.
And what exactly is included in the application? What kind of information are you looking for?
The application is from the municipality. It's standard from the municipality. I'm not sure exactly what is on it, only that I've been giving it. They have to give it back to the municipality. Up until now, until we had an email address, it had been given out by the Public Information Office. So, really, we're just acting as a conduit to make sure it gets to the municipality. I know that Gabriella or Crandall's office could give you more information about the contents of that, but it's been pretty standard what they've had to fill out in years past.
Thank you, Alexandra.
Thank you.
The next order of business we have is the Carnegie Medal awarded to Sanford Harling III for his extraordinary heroism. The Carnegie Medal from the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission is awarded to those in the United States and those of Canada who have demonstrated an outstanding civilian heroism, risking their lives to ensure the safety of others. Tonight Sanford Harling III, Narsetown's own Little Hero, is being honored with the Carnegie Hero Medal Award for civil heroism in recognition for his act of extraordinary bravery when he lost his life saving those he loved from a house fire in February of 2016. In being one of the 20 Carnegie Medal recipients for 2017, Sanford is the third recipient from Narsetown to receive the honor. Tonight, this prestigious award is being given to the parents of Sanford Harling to honor his memory and tremendous act of heroism. Councilmember Scott Cooper, Chief O'Donnell, and Mr. Eric Zern, Executive Director of the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission, please join me down in front with the Harling family in that order to make comments, and Mr. Zern will offer his remarks and present the medal to the family. At this time, I would like to ask Councilwoman Scott Cooper for any comments.
To the Harling family, I felt the need to write something down to express how we as a community feel about what you are going through and about your Little Man-Man. So, please give me just a moment so I can read this. As your third district council member, I feel privileged to stand here and have this opportunity to honor Sanford Harling III. When you think of courage, what do you think of? I think of four words: fearless, heroism, bravery, and boldness. These four words describe Sanford, for he exemplifies the meaning of courage. We as adults rationalize many things that we do, but this young man acted. He didn't think twice about what he was going to do. He did it on instinct and out of love for his father. His selfless courage is an example of family love. As a mother, I cannot imagine your internal pain in losing a child, but the love that you instilled within your son to be a giver of love and the strength needed to love unselfishly is the measure of his actions. And we as parents, family, neighbors, and friends should take a message from your son to love unconditionally. May God bless you as you continue to always remember the love you have and showed, your son showed, for this community and to the world. Thank you.
Thank you for having me here today. Andrew Carnegie established the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission in April 1904 for one purpose: to ensure that those who risk or lose their lives for others, or their survivors and dependents, should not suffer as a result of a split-second decision to put in others' life before one's own. So, it was with a very real sense of empathy that Carnegie gave, not only of his vast fortune, but something of himself, to benefit these true heroes of our society. It was in the aftermath of the Harwick Mine disaster near Pittsburgh which resulted in the death of 181 miners, including Selwyn Taylor and Daniel Lyle, who died attempting to save their fellows from perishing. Carnegie would soon after remark, "I can't get those widows and children of the mine out of my head." And so moved was Carnegie by their sacrifice that the Hero Fund and the Carnegie Medal were born. Now more than 113 years later, Carnegie's vision continues on in the work of the commission as it recognizes civilian heroism and honors those who risk their lives for others. The almost 10,000 Carnegie Medal recipients since Harwick represent the very best of our society. They come from all walks of life, all racial, ethnic, socioeconomic, and religious backgrounds, but they have in common their willingness to put the life of another before their very own, if only for one moment in time, when they are forced to make a very difficult decision, to act or not to act, to save another human being. One-fifth of all Carnegie heroes have made the ultimate sacrifice, and they will never be forgotten. Sanford Harling III certainly embodied Carnegie's ideal. What follows is the commission's official account of Sanford's act. Sanford Harling III died attempting to rescue Sanford Harling Jr. from burning in Narsetown, Pennsylvania on February 5th, 2016. Sanford Harling Jr., 58, who required the use of a walker, was on the second floor of the family's duplex unit after fire broke out in the living room on the first floor. He alerted family members, including his son Sanford, 12, student, who then fled the structure, but flames grew to block Harling's access to the first floor. Indicating to those outside the rear of the house that he was returning for his father, Sanford re-entered the structure through its back door. Harling meanwhile went to a second-floor window on the side of the house and dropped from it to the ground, which was grassy. He sustained significant injury, which required hospitalization. When conditions permitted, firefighters entered the house and found Sanford on the first floor. He had died of smoke inhalation and thermal burns. I understand Sanford was known to those who love him as Man-Man. No name has ever seemed more fitting. Each Carnegie Medal bears the following words from the Gospel of John, and if you listen very carefully, you may hear the echo of this young man's name in the verse itself: "An eternal tribute, and I hope that it serves to comfort those who love and miss him so." "No greater love hath man than this, that a man lay down his life for his friends." So, it is my honor and privilege today to present the Carnegie Medal for Heroism to Sanford Harling III, Man-Man, for his actions on February 5th, 2016. Can I ask this family to step forward, please?
Thank you all so much. For what y'all did for my son, I really appreciate it.
Yes, we would like to thank you from the Hero, Carnegie Hero Fund, and also the council for allowing this to happen today, and all the firemen that were there on that day. We feel like really honored to be able to receive this award and honor Sanford. And like, this is something that's going to remain in our heart. That's a piece of him right there. So, you know, this is always going to be in our heart, and we thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lewis, are there any announcements this evening?
Yes, there are. The Narsetown Recreation Department, the Summer Playground Program, camp dates begin Monday, June 26, 2017, through August 4, 2017. The hours will be 9 to 2:45, and ages range from 5 to 13. Registration in person on June 3 and June 10 at Municipal Hall from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., or you can sign up online at narsetown.reckdesk.com, and pay in person at the Municipal Hall, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. The Narsetown Police Foundation is hosting a fundraiser on Saturday, May 13, to help K-9 Officer Jerry get a jitney at the Manacore Pavilion. Admission is $20 for adults, and children 15 and under are free. The admission entitles you to one food ticket and three beverage tickets. There will be basket raffles, 50/50, food and beverage, police exhibits, the K-9 demonstration, and community tables. Tickets can be purchased at Sean Cullen's office at 40 East Main Street in Narsetown. On May 7, from 9 to 1, is the Great Narsetown Cleanup. Volunteers are needed. The starting time is 8:30 a.m. at the Riverfront Park. You can contact the New Horizons Coordinator, Kristi Barletta, at 610-270-0420, or kbarletta, B-A-R-L-E-T-T-A, at narsetown.org. The Narsetown Citizens Leadership Academy, I guess will be, fall sessions will be held from 6 to 7:30. One Thursday is from September 14 through November 2 at Municipal Hall. The academy is free of charge for Narsetown residents and business owners, and it's limited to 20 participants, first come, first served. Please contact the Public Information Office at 610-270-0429, or email Gabriella at gpreet, P-R-E-T-E, at narsetown.org. And we also heard from the Special Events, Cultural and Special Events Committee about the Fourth of July celebration. The parade will begin at 10 a.m. Entries can reflect traditional Fourth of July themes and also things that they're proud of Narsetown. Festivities are from 12 to 9 at Elmwood Park, which would include the music, dance performers, food trucks, vendors, games, and entertainment. They are accepting sponsorship, Narsetown Neighbor, $500; Narsetown Friend, $1,000, and grand sponsors for $3,000. Interested participants and sponsors can contact the municipality at 610-270-0429, or narsetownpaevents@gmail.com. And I believe that concludes, unless there are announcements.
Councilwoman Jones?
Good evening. Tomorrow evening, Narsetown Area High School Choir will be having a bingo night at the high school, starting at 6:30 p.m. Thursday, the 4th, the NAACP of Narsetown will have a candidate forum for all aspiring elected officials who will be running for school board and council and other positions. Saturday, the 7th, I will be hosting a free book giveaway and children's event at the Carver Center from 1 p.m. to 4 p.m. Next week, on the 11th, Senator Leach, Daylon Leach, is having a driver's license restoration clinic at the Carver Center from 4:30 to 6:30. And the 13th, there will be a photo ID clinic at the New Life Plaza Church on West Marshall Street from 10 a.m. to noon. May 20th, Narsetown Men of Excellence will have a scholarship gala. It will be at Crown Plaza on the 20th, and proceeds will go towards scholarships for Narsetown students. Also, Camp Rainbow is now accepting applications for their summer camp, so share the word. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman Scott Cooper?
On May 13th, the NAACP Health Committee will be hosting a mental health program with two speakers coming from Johns Hopkins University, and that will be from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 noon. And on May 20th, the Help a Single Parent Foundation and CEO Mike Scott will be holding a fundraiser at the Narsetown Cedar Club on Germantown Avenue from 8 to midnight. And you can see any of the Help a Single Parent members for tickets. I'm one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scott Cooper. Are there any other announcements? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, are there any public comments this evening?
Yes. Al Johnson? Okay. Michelle Adams?
I'm Michelle Adams. I am a resident at the 200 block of Jacoby Street. We're here to address the drunk driving, hit-and-runs on our block. Within the last four years, my vehicle has been hit five times. My vehicle has been hit twice within the last two months. Just back in December, nine cars was hit, and out of the nine cars, three was totaled. And each time it's been in front of our houses. This last time, someone literally backed into my, they was working on the street at Jacoby and Arch. Car backed up, which I blame the people working on the street, because if you're working at the end of the block and you're saying the road is closed, you should have closed up the top of the block, and everybody's trying to back up. This car backs into my parked car and takes off. Nobody get a license plate, nobody get anything. But at the end of the day, all these incidents, I have multiple cars that's being hit. So, this is deductible and money coming out of my household and out of my pocket to pay for all these hit-and-runs. So, like I said, and that's our concern about, you know, we need speed blocks, we got a whole lot of small children on the block, and it's like, they just run through this block at, you know, 40, 50, 60 miles an hour, like it's a racetrack. And it's, like I said, it's just, it's costing me too much as one person. Like I said, my car has been hit five times, and there's multiple cars in my household within the last four years. And like I said, December, and then now, just this past three weeks ago, I'm without a car because my car is back in the shop again.
Thank you. I am sorry to hear about your accident, and I would like Captain Klausser, when he gets a moment, if he could, get your information so we can follow up, do an investigation, and if he could share with council the findings to see how we can improve upon this process or come to some sort of a resolution for the residents in the 200 block of Jacoby Street.
And that's what we're requesting, like speed blocks or something, and I want our streets to protect not only our properties, but our children. And then I just feel like, you know, Narsetown Police said, "You're here to serve and to protect." I called you five times. It took you two hours to answer that call. And then I'm asking him when he got there, when he found, I kept calling dispatch, they kept telling me, "They're right around the corner." Two officers is around the corner. Call back again. I have two en route. I literally called back four times. The fourth time she said, "Are you outside?" I said, "I'm standing." They said, "They should be turning the corner." They came 30 minutes later. I'm asking him, "Well, did you even go look for the person?" He was like, "No, we didn't look for the person." So, again, if it took you two hours to come, my thing is, even if you would have, the description one of the neighbors gave was, "It was a gray Ford Focus," you didn't even try to look for it. Like, "I'm a victim here of all these hit-and-runs," and basically it's like, "I don't feel like I'm being served or protected by my own police department."
Understood. Again, Captain Klausser, if he could, get with Ms. Adams and receive her information so we can follow up.
Rochelle Boggs? Is it Boggs? No? Oh.
Hi, council.
Good evening.
I'm really kind of here also as a resident on Jacoby Street, to try to reiterate the same thing that Michelle is saying. Over the past couple of years, we have a lot of children on our block now, and we're talking young children that could easily run out in the street, or anything can happen. And we have cars constantly speeding down our streets when kids are out playing. So, I don't know if like, we're able to get like, a sign that says children are on the block or anything of that nature, but it's like an ongoing situation, and I've lived on this block at least 20 years. But the situation continues to get worse and worse. Now, I have not had my car hit, but I've witnessed other people living on the block that have had their cars totaled and hit, and it's just occurring too much. I understand incidents can happen, but this is like, this is happening too often, and it's just a concern because there are so many children living on the block now. So, we're just praying that you really take into consideration the signs for, you know, saying that children live within the area, or the speed bumps on the block to kind of assist with the matter.
Billy Boggs?
Thank you.
I just want to talk about the same matter of the situation on Jacoby Street. I live on Jacoby Street, and my thing is that with all the traffic and all the speeding going down the street, I'm concerned about the children and stuff out there, so I'm just in agreement with everybody here and there about how to solve that problem. I mean, I don't know about the speed bumps or either the signs or whatever it takes, you know? My thing is, there's a lot of kids out there. We have a community center across the street, and I'm looking forward to that to be reopened more often, maybe give a lot of the kids instead of access on the streets, to be in the community center instead of being out there. the community center instead of being out there running around or jeopardizing kids' lives out there before something happened. I'd like to see something happen before it does. Thank you.
Pamela Bellamy?
Okay, thank you.
Sharon Baptiste?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Council, my name is Sharon Baptiste. May I hand out our concerns printed out? Am I allowed? The persons that have stood up before me previously, we all represent our neighborhood, and we're the last standing homeowners. What is happening on Jacoby Street is that as the homeowners die, entrepreneurs purchase the homes and turn them into rental properties. And so therefore, the feeling of community is waning on Jacoby Street, which includes our safety, and it also includes a strong increase of children on the neighborhood. The homeowners try their best to keep their properties looking presentable, but when we're overwhelmed with renters, they don't have the same love or the loyalty that we have for Jacoby Street. The first, number one on the list that I presented to you is a perfect example of what's going on on the 200th and the 100th block of Jacoby Street. It's 224 Jacoby Street. These homes are over 100 years old, where back at that time, the culture was to have large, elaborate homes for small to moderate-sized families. At this present time, the landlord has allowed 12 people to live in one house. And in doing so, there are five cars that belong to the one building. Most of these homes, as I said before, have been converted to two to three or four apartment rooms, and each apartment has a person that owns a car. So therefore, on the 100th and 200th block of Jacoby Street, there is always a parking So I brought that to your attention because as a resident of this town, I did what I was supposed to do. I contacted code enforcement to share my concern. I've learned to accept having renters, but 12 people in one house, five cars in one house, that's a bit much. And especially when you take the time to follow the rules and the procedures, and then there's no feedback. When I spoke to the landlord, his response was, "They're all family." But we're still being taken advantage of. The second issue is, in agreement with my neighbors, about the speed on Jacoby Street and the amount of drunk-driving incidents. It is in a dangerous proportion, and I really plead with you that you will take the time to investigate and not drag. It's getting scary. As Michelle said, we had one in December, we had another one, and then just recently, our car was damaged again. The incident in December, the car flew in the air, and there was, I saw the fire in the air, and the first thing that came to my mind, if there's an explosion, as we have trees, and the street isn't that wide, that could've been a great fire disaster. So once again, I implore, even though we're small in number, we're strong in the fact that this is a very dangerous situation, and since we are overwhelmed with rental properties now, there's a lot of children. The third issue on my sheet concerns 103 Jacoby Street. It is located at the intersection of the 900th block of Green and the 100th and 200th blocks of Jacoby Street. This was an abandoned building for a long time. However, it's been bought by an entrepreneur, and it's being renovated. The fear is, where are these tenants going to park? It's getting to a point where we're gonna be having parking wars. So I don't know what your procedure is for that, and I look for that instruction as to whom to contact, to see if the land that is exposed right now could be turned into a parking lot for the residents of, one of, the future residents of 103. And thank you very much for taking the time to listen.
Thank you. And I hear your concerns, and I thank you all for coming together as such a community should in regards to public safety and the safety of others. So in addition to talking to Captain Clouser, I would also recommend speaking to our Code Enforcer Director, Michael Simonsen, and also Mr. Odenbo from Public Works, to again, try to come to a resolution. And again, we would, as council, like to know what the findings are, and hopefully we could all come to a conclusion to resolve this issue. So thank you for your time, and I'm glad you came out as a community.
That's it.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, are there, is there any communication this evening?
No, there's not.
Thank you. First order of business we have is Municipal Council in regards to Resolution 17-128 for the Board and Committee Appointments. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. What you have before you, as you said, is Resolution 17-128. As you know, council continuously seeks to populate the boards that it appoint, boards and commissions and committees that it appoints. This is an appointment of a zoning hearing board alternate with a term that would be expiring December 31st, 2021. That alternate is Jason Dennis, and this resolution seeks council's approval to appoint Mr. Dennis to serve as alternate, expiring December 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion to appoint Jason Dennis as an alternate to the advisory board of the zoning hearing board? Madam Secretary, may I please have roll call?
Olivia Brady, Alri Scott Cooper, Hakeem Jones, Heather Lewis, Sueann Gardner, Sonia Sanders.
Aye. The ayes have it, and Resolution 17-128 is approved. Next order of business we have is for code enforcement. Mr. Simonsen?
Thank you, Madam President. Code enforcement has the HARB certificates of appropriateness for April of 2017. The following properties applied to the HARB board and were approved with conditions. 915 West Marshall Street was to replace some windows. 556 Noble Street was to replace windows and a door. 708 Green Street was for exterior renovations. 710 Green Street was also for exterior renovations, and 508 Buttonwood was to install a handrail to match the existing.
Any questions or comments in regards to the HARB appropriateness? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the properties that were applied for review by the HARB board? All in favor? Any nays? Seeing none, the ayes have it, that motion is approved. Would a member of council like to make a motion to open the agenda pertaining to 315 Arch Street, where the applicant sought to sell automobile tires? Agenda is open.
Madam President, may I make a brief explanation? The Norristown Zoning Hearing Board heard an application for 315 Arch Street, where the applicant sought zoning relief to sell automobile tires. The zoning hearing board issued a written decision and denied this relief. I was contacted by the zoning hearing board solicitor and asked the council support the zoning hearing board's decision. I know, previous to this council meeting, I know there was no scheduled executive session, but there was a brief executive session pertaining to litigation involving this matter before the council meeting, where Ms. Massagne gave explanation that this was in the Town Center zoning district, and sale of automobile tires was not a permitted use. So therefore, I suggested to council that they make a motion, that I write a letter to the court, and attend a hearing where I state the council supports the zoning hearing board's decision.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Do we have any questions from council? Do we have any public comments in regards to 315 Arch Street? Seeing none, would a member of council like to make a motion for the proceedings to have the solicitor send a letter in support of the zoning hearing board's denial of a variance request for 315 Arch Street, where the applicant sought to sell automobile tires? All in favor? Any nays? Seeing none, the ayes have it, and that motion is approved. Last order of business, the adjournment. Would a member of council like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor? Ayes have it, meeting is adjourned.